Brother Newsreel, we're thankful, we're grateful again tonight to be able to be able to study the word of God. Let me first of all say I miss you all on Sunday. I pray that y'all miss me as well, but I heard y'all had a great time in the Lord. Brother Zachary, Smith stood in my stead while I was with my dear friend, Ophias Hayward in Atlanta, Georgia. And I pray that again, that that you was blessed, but I'll be back Sunday. And I'm looking forward to seeing each and every one of you all in attendance. Amen. Tonight, we're going to continue our study tonight as we engage. And as we conclude on Wednesday night, this particular series entitled, I Hate This Church. We've been walking for the last six weeks, teaching, looking at this particular subject. We're going to end on Sunday. We're going to end the series on Sunday in the sermon. But we're going to end tonight in Bible study in this particular series. For those who just joined us and you're eavesdropping on this, this ladder conversation. We started off talking about the importance of the church, that the church of my Lord was something that was on the mind of God before the foundation of the world, right? We talked about how before God formed anything, he had the church in mind. The church was something that was always important in the, in the mind and outside of God. We also discovered that the church is so important that we, we have to start using the language of the church. That the church is not somewhere you go, but, but it's what you become. And so we, we, we talked about how we have become the church. And sometimes people hate what they don't understand. And so one of the things we talked about in this series is why people hate the church. When people hear the word church, those who are unbelievers or those who have been in church, quote unquote, all of their lives, they find themselves with a bad taste in their mouths when it comes to the church. And one of the things I suggested, the reason why is because of how we as the ecclesia, how we have painted the church to be. And so some people have ran from the church. Some people don't want to have anything to do with the church. Often because of how we have painted the church. I'm under the belief tonight that oftentimes what we have painted for people in the world and what we have painted for people to be the church, sometimes it does not line up with the New Testament scripture. And so what we tried to do, we tried to show how we have these isms that oftentimes keep people from the church. Now understand, the church is important. Make no doubt about it. It is oftentimes how we have painted the church to be. So real quickly, we remember we talked about traditionalism, that many people hate church because of the tradition of men. And we noticed, we talked about tradition itself is not wrong. There are a lot of traditions that we have in the church that are great traditions. However, it becomes very dreadful to the body when you try to make a tradition on the same standard as the word of God. And when you do that, you make the word of God a non-efficacy. So we talked about the traditional man. We talked about legalism, how these isms, y'all know these isms, these practices, this ism, this legalism. How legalism is a danger to the body of Christ, where you begin to say what God has not said. You begin to speak what God has not spoken. You begin to, you begin to try to make scripture say something that the scripture never meant for it to say. We talked about how you have, have you have taught another gospel. Amen. Galatians one, remember talking about that, that Paul says, I marvel that you are so soon removed, those who are called you unto another gospel, which is not another. And we kind of talked about how sometimes in our fellowship, what we call another gospel is really not another gospel. Sometimes it's just preference. However, another gospel is whenever you try to rule your life or try to get righteousness based on a law, based upon trying to do everything, cross every T, dot in every I, which leads us to professionalism, right? That these isms that has kept people from saying, I don't want to have anything to do with the church. I hate the church. I want God, but I don't want his people. But what we have discovered, you cannot have Jesus and not have his body. I wish I had somebody that would put a thumbs up somewhere doing that, that, that you cannot have Jesus without his body. If you own Christ, you got to accept the church that belongs to Christ. You got it. You got that coming. Your relationship with God may be personal, but your relationship with Christ is not private. Let me say it one more time. Your relationship with God is personal, but make no mistake about it, is not private. That God has set it up that people from different walks of life, from different backgrounds, from different age ranges are baptized into the body of Christ, and we have become one body in Jesus. And so we talked about these isms. So the last Wednesday, we talked about this last ism that I want to kind of spend some time on. I didn't finish. I want to spend some time on this ism called individualism, right? Now I told you individualism, it has, it has damaged the church in so many different ways. Individualism have kept people from coming to Jesus because they see you and they don't see Jesus. That oftentimes when people see us, when they are presented with you and I, they ought to see the Lord and not us. But however, in the body of Christ far too long, we have too many Christians who have found themselves saying that they are children of God, saying that they are people of God, but they have fallen into this ism called individualism. Remember what we, by definition, what individualism is? It is more focused on independency rather than interdependency. I hope you follow that. It is when you are focused so much on your independence in Christ that you have forgotten that God meant for us to be in the body together, to work together in Christ. So you show me a Christian who tries to serve God individually, are separated aside from the church. I saw you somebody who does not understand the scope of the gospel of Jesus Christ. I told you during this pandemic, all across our brotherhood, how many preachers I've talked to where, where this particular pandemic, COVID, has caused a lot of individualism. It has caused a lot of people who have became so comfortable at home that they have started creating their own brand of ministry independently and aside and separate from the Lord's church. And, and I, I think I made, made a strong point that nothing wrong with doing anything like that, nothing wrong. We're feeding the homeless, nothing wrong. We're giving our backpack, nothing wrong with any of that. The whole purpose of what I'm saying is oftentimes you cannot do the work that, that's quote unquote, of the world and not be attached to the ministry of the church. There is a danger in that. And as I said before, what God has set up, God has placed a covering for the body of Christ. The Bible says in Ephesians four, the reason he gave gifts to men, and the men are now a gift to the church. He talks about Ephesians four eleven, that men, he give gifts. And he turns around and says, the men that he, that he gives the gift to are now a gift to the church, which means prophets, prophets, apostles, evangelists, pastoring teachers. He says they are a gift to the body of Christ and is their responsibility to equip the body to do the work of ministry. I need you to know there is no apostle that's written to an individual Christian. Oh, I need to say that one more time. There is no, there is no apostle that Paul wrote Ephesians, Colossians, Philippians, the heat, there is no such thing as apostle wrote to an individual Christian. That every time Paul wrote, he was, apostle, he was writing more so to the church as a body of believers. Ephesians, Colossians, he's writing because he says, when y'all come together, not individually, but when you come together corporately, I want this letter to be read to the people because I need them to understand the ministry of one another. Okay, okay. So, so we've, so we've been talking about this individualism. We talked about how individualism is a cousin to selfishness. Amen. That have you ever asked yourself or thought of yourself being selfish? That, that I want you to know that selfishness keeps people from coming to Jesus when they see you and your selfishness. Selfishness, my brothers and my sisters, it literally means to be devoted to or caring only for oneself. It's concerned primarily with one's own interests and benefits and, and welfare regardless of other people. See, see selfishness suggests that I'm going to get mine, so you better get yours. Yeah. Selfishness says that it's all about me, but here is the struggle tonight. How can you be selfish when you supposed to serve a selfless Jesus? How can you say it's all about me, but you had a Jesus who didn't make it about him? Oh my God. In other words, I need us to understand tonight that when you are a Christian, when you are a child of God, God saw forth that the ecclesia may be a piece of heaven on earth and everybody a part of the body play their part. That everybody plays a role in the body. That God has a role for each and every one of us to play inside the body. Now, if you're not playing your role inside the body, something is wrong because God has equipped each and every one of us with gifts and abilities to be able to function in the body of Christ. Now oftentimes people, and I get, they get to deal with in this series, I may say something about it Sunday, but sometimes people experience church hurt. And when they experience church hurt, they begin to withdraw from the body. Or they begin to not use their guilt in the body. Now let me help you understand something, that there, I believe at some juncture along this Christian journey, everybody going to experience some form of church hurt. Oh, let me say that. I want you to know when you got in the church, you didn't get to heaven yet. Cause you still got some imperfect people who God is trying to sanctify. God is molding, God is shaping. And, 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 and here it is, sometimes we get the idea or the mentality that we think the gift God has given us, we think it belongs to us. Not recognizing we're only a steward over that which God has given us. If there's anybody who ever experienced church hurt, that's Jesus. But Jesus still show up in the assembly. Cause y'all, y'all ain't, y'all, y'all ain't following. If there's anybody who's ever experienced church hurt, it's Jesus. But he still shows up in the assembly. Third time for charm. If, if there is anybody who's ever experienced hurt from a people who say they love them. From a people who say that they, that he's their savior, from a people who say they, they're thankful for, from a people who say they, they praise them, from a people who do all of these things, yet you continue to hurt Jesus, but he still shows up in the assembly. Matter of fact, you ain't got to say he showed up at the assembly. He showed up last night with your ungrateful self. He showed up last night with you constantly doing the same thing over and over again and still telling him that you sorry, but he still shows up and put food on your table, put a roof over your head, put clothes on your back, and you keep hurting Jesus. But for some apparent reason, he loved you enough that he still shows up. Aren't you happy tonight that even when you was a wretch undone, he still shows up? And if he can show up in church hurt, oh my God. Who are you to feel like that you won't not do the work of ministry when you experience church hurt? Who, what, what blood have you shed? Who put nails in your hand? Who put a crown of thorns on your head? Who pissed you in your side? Who spit on you and told you, you wasn't the son of God? Man, I, I, I want us to understand that we have to learn to paint the biblical portrait of the church. The church has never been about people, but the church has always been about the one who's over the people, which is Jesus. So we got to understand that tonight, God is looking for us to die to our sins. He's looking for us to put our pride to the side. He's looking for us to say, God, I'm more of God and none of me. That's what we look. He's looking tonight that we kill this ism called individualism. And so last week I showed you in First Corinthians, chapter 12 and verse number 27, the Bible says, now you are what? The body of Christ and individuals members of it. That we are the body of Christ. We are his body. We are his ecclesia. There is a reason why he says that in First Corinthians, chapter 12 and verse number 22, he said, there is one body. Amen. Now oftentimes what we'll do in the churches of Christ and in the fellowship of, of our Lord, and I know we don't mean any harm, but sometimes we'll beat other folk over the head trying to tell folk that we are the one body, which we are the one body, we are the one church. That's not my point. My point is that we missed the whole narrative of what Paul is trying to come across in First Corinthians, chapter 12. He's not talking to non-believers when he says there is one body. He's talking to believers, telling them they are one body. Well, Paul, why you kind of tell believers that they are one body? Because don't they know they the one body? Yeah, Paul will say, yeah, they know they the one body. They just ain't acting like the one body. So let me remind them since they have got spiritual amnesia, since they know they the one body, but they ain't acting like the one body. Let me tell them and remind them there is one body. In other words, Paul is saying in First Corinthians 12, that I need you to understand something. I ain't talking to the non-believer. I'm talking to you who in the body. I'm talking to you who acting like you're separate and aside from the body. I'm talking to those with bad attitudes and bad spirits and closed on hearts. I need you to know that there is one body, right? And so he says, I need you to know there's a function for each and every one of them. The, the, the struggle I see in the body of Christ at large, that we got too many pew members and not enough functioning body parts. We got a, we got a lot of people who come to church to receive, but not enough ready to give back. Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. We got a lot of believers who want to know what can I get out of? Mm-hmm. If I come to Northwest, what can Northwest give me? Now here it is, here it is. Northwest, God has set it up. God has put us in the body for a reason. God has placed us there and there's, and we know what we can give. But my question is, when we get you, what do we get? My God, when, 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 when you are in the body, when Christ adds you to his body, when he gets you, the question becomes, what does he get? Because if you are just like, you just trying to get spiritual gas, you show up to the gas station. Ain't paid nothing to get nothing, but you want to get gas. My God, you just come in for a, a, a quick fill up to get your energy going, to get you through the day. And then you empty and you, and you repeat the next week. No, 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 no. Here it is. God says that we are a body. The hand, your hand, your physical hand, if your physical hand decide that, and then the left hand say, I ain't gonna work today. Your body gonna recognize. Amen. And here, if, if your foot decide that it ain't gonna walk today, the rest of the body gonna recognize. Yeah. Some, sometimes when you say, well, I can live, the doctor will tell you, when you can live, they'll tell you, you don't need a kidney. Oh, I need it. I make it live without it, but I need it. Cause God never gave you something that you didn't need. So when you talk about the body of Christ, I need us to see ourselves as a body. Paul was not trying to be poetic. He was trying to give us a imagery that we as the body of Christ is important. So, so the first thing I showed you last week, I won't spend time on the first point, but I just noted. Last week I told you, if you're going, if we're going to allow individualism to die, we got to put other needs before our needs. And I kind of told that financially, that is when you make a compliment to somebody, that's prayer, that the First Corinthians 1024 says, let no one seek only his own good, but also to the, the of others. And so we talked about, we went through this, this, this connotation, that we got to learn how to sometimes put other needs before I put ours. Not saying you gonna go without, but it's also saying that you see somebody, you see a need and you feel the need. That if you see a need, why not feel the need? Why you waiting on the person to ask you to help when you see the need? And you, you may be the help that God has sent. Does that make sense? We talked about in Acts two, how when they came, when they, when they obeyed the gospel of Jesus Christ, the wonderful thing about obeying the gospel, they was from different backgrounds, different nations. And then we, and to the, and I told y'all, we dealt with the traditionalism because I, I've been in church long enough to know people make everything a sin. And I remember growing up, hearing people say, it's, it's a sin to have a, to, to have a, to sell anything at the church. It's a sin to have, to sell possessions and sell stuff at church to benefit and help somebody else. I don't know where they got it from. I just know it's traditionalism because when I read in Acts two, I find our, our first sale, I find our first, our first possession of sale. The Bible said they sold their possessions. And the Bible says, when they sold their possession for money, then they got the money and they gave to everybody that was in need. See that ministry going on because they learned how to put others before they put themselves. They said, we in this together. We one body, we from different backgrounds, we obeying the same Lord. We not only share Jesus, but we share resources, my God. And so, and so if we're going to kill this individualism, we got to put, sometimes put other needs before our needs. Y'all got that? Now let me go to the second point. I gotta spend some time on here. Now, if we want to kill individualism, watch this, wait for it. You got to practice being a giver and not a getter. Oh, it may not be good English, but it's so good theology. You got to practice being a giver and not a giver. What you mean preacher? Yeah, you got to practice being a giver and not a giver. What do you mean? We are so selfish as people in the body of Christ is a shame. It's almost like we don't want anybody else to get before us or do better than us. To the point where we struggle with giving to other people and celebrating other people. Oh, I know I'm right tonight. It, it is almost to the point where we have been so caught up on our own individualism and what we want to do that is difficult for some of us to give to other people. Even celebrate other people. Have you ever been in a crowd of people? And see everybody is celebrating this one person and telling them they just graduated with a bachelor's degree? And you got 10 folks there celebrating, saying, my God, you did it. And they feeling they celebrating the person, that you always got one person in the group instead of celebrating. They'll say, that's good, but I'm going back for my master's degree. Oh, I know I'm talking, uh, that, that's, that's wonderful. I'm happy for you. But man, I'm going back for my master's degree. Well, we ain't talking about you today. We not even celebrating you today. My sister just got her bachelor's degree. So instead of us dismissing that, let's celebrate the person who's, who is being, being, was you, being used by God in that capacity. We have become some selfish people. Y'all know I'm right about it. There is always somebody in the group who already know what you trying to figure out. Okay. Y'all, y'all, y'all ain't talk. There's always somebody who always know what you trying to figure out. In other words, you trying to figure out something, you trying to talking about Chicago. You trying to, you know, you've heard about, heard about this, this shop down in Chicago. They already been to the shop. Oh yeah, they already been there. They already been there and done that. You talking about a new recipe, you, you trying, grandma gave you a new recipe. Already made that recipe. Already did it. Because it's hard for people like that to celebrate other people. It's a heart of selfishness. And whenever you see it, what you're seeing is individualism. Lean in child of God, let me tell you, how you help people like that is not be silent when they do it. I'm gonna help somebody tonight. See, if the church is ever going to grow and become and to be what God need us to be, you got to stop being silent when you see that type of stuff. You got to learn to minister to people in maturity. It's a teaching moment. That when they do that, let me stop you sister. I know you getting your master's degree, but what made you think it was all right to stop us from celebrating her to start talking about you? What made you think that was all right? Because we got to learn as a body, if we're going to grow, if we're going to function, we got to show the world, we kill individualism. And what we want the world to know, no, not in this house, that we celebrate with each other. Because Paul says, when one member suffer, we all suffer. But when one member is being honored, we all honor because we are one body. Oh, I, I, I know this type, but it's right tonight. I want us to practice being a giver and not a getter. I want you to see something. First Corinthians, chapter 16. First Corinthians, chapter 16. And meet me at verse number 15. I'm gonna read from the New King James. I'm reading from the N I B. Uh, and I want you to read this with me. First Corinthians 16, verse number 15. The Bible says, I put seed to brethren, you know that the house of Stephanus, that is the first fruit, fruit of Archaea, that they may have addicted themselves to the ministry of the saints. Oh, y'all missed it. The Bible says, these good Christians, the Bible says, they was addicted. They addicted themselves to the ministry of the saints. In other words, they couldn't help themselves. That everything they did, they was trying to be a giver. They addicted themselves. The, 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 the N I B says that they devoted themselves to the service of the Lord people. In other words, my question tonight, are you a giver or just a getter? Have you addicted yourself to the ministry of the saints? Have you, does it bother you when you see somebody in a, in a state they ought not be in? The, the, are you addicted to ministry? But you know the sad reality, we addicted to everything else but ministry. We addicted to, we addicted to work, but not ministry. Addicted to that man and that woman, but not ministry. Addicted to our creature comforts, clothes, cash and cribs, but we not addicted to ministry. And Paul says that I, I, I want to highlight these members who have found themselves being givers and not getter. If you had the same energy, like you got on your job for the Lord's church, man, with the church will be full filled up. If you, the same detail that you have, making sure that you make sure your man is happy and your woman, that same detail that you have for them, if you had it for the Lord, man, ministry would be out this world. How is it that you can just give the Lord whatever you want to give them, but give something that has a, a, a temporary value? Everything, the very thing that have the eternal value, you don't give it anything. God says, I need my people to be givers and not getters. In other words, I need my people to recognize there is bigger than them. That they got to learn, you got to practice how to not to put yourself and say, I'm, I'm gonna do this for this person today. And I ain't looking for nothing in the return. Amen. I'm gonna do this for the glory of God, so God can be pleased. My name ain't got to be called. I ain't got to get no packs on the back because what I want to do, I just want to bless somebody. Watch this, watch this. Look at, look at, look at Luke chapter 12. Luke chapter 12, verse number 13. Luke chapter 12, verse number 13. Try to be a giver and not a getter. Watch this. Luke chapter 12, verse 13. Y'all, y'all follow me in reading this. The Bible says, then someone called from the crowd. Teacher, please tell my brother to divide our fathers and stay with me. And I love this because here you have a narrative of this man saying, Jesus. Because here you have a narrative of this man saying, Jesus. Tell my brother to divide my fathers and stay with me. Watch what Jesus say. Now, now this ain't my lesson, but it's a good point to put right here. Watch the boundary that Jesus had with people. Jesus replied, friend, who made me a judge over you? Deciding such things as that. Y'all don't miss it. Jesus said, yes, I'm Savior. Yes, I'm Lord, but that what y'all talking about ain't got nothing to do with me. Oh, y'all missed it. See, see, y'all didn't know Jesus had boundaries. Jesus says, I understand. I got, I do miracles. Uh, I, I, I heal the sick. I, I, I do all of that. But what y'all trying to put me in ain't got nothing to do with me. I got boundaries. If you really wanna be like Jesus, learn to have boundaries like the Lord. The Lord said, what you talking about? Don't put me in it. Don't have me a part of that. See, if you really wanna be like Jesus, be the Jesus who say, I got boundaries. I'm a Savior. I'm Lord. I love you, but I still got boundaries. Jesus says, they ain't got nothing to do with me. Watch what he said. He says. Then he said, beware. Guard against every kind of greed. Life is not measured by how much you own. Then he told them a story. Watch the story he tell. A rich man had fertile farm that produced fine crops. Watch me. He said to himself, watch, watch the selfishness. What should I do? I don't have room for all my crops. Then he says, I know I'll tear down my barns and be a bigger one. Then I'll have room enough to store all my wheat and other goods. And I'll sit back and say to myself, my friend, you have enough stored away for years to come. Now take it easy, eat, drink and be merry. But watch what Jesus said. But God said to him, you fool. You will die this very night. Then who will get everything you worked for? Yes, a person is a fool to store up earthly wealth. But not have a rich relationship with God. Oh, wait a minute. Jesus says, first of all, it ain't got nothing to do with me. But let me help you to understand something, that you are so greedy. And you're so caught up on individualism, that you got so much stuff. The only thing you are concerned about is getting. And not give, not giving, getting and not giving. In other words, you're so concerned about you and your well-being. And you got so much stuff, you gotta turn down and be a bigger barn when you can easily give some stuff away to help somebody else. But whenever you operate in greed and selfishness and individualism, you show yourself. Not being rich towards God. There, there are people tonight who struggle with giving back to God. Why? Because of greed. There are people who struggle with, 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 with not giving back to family, friends, because of greed. I wanna share something with you. You show me a person who's greedy. And I show you a person who's dead in so many areas in their spiritual life. Do you, have you ever thought about, and I shared this with, with the church a few years ago, but have you ever thought about? Why the Dead Sea is called the Dead Sea? It's called the Dead Sea because the Dead Sea, it receives water. Coming in. It's two rivers that come through the Dead Sea. It receives, but it doesn't have an outlet. So it just, it, it becomes a giver, a sea that gives, I mean receives, but it don't gives. And so nothing lives in the Dead Sea because it's a receiver, but it's not a giver. And if you just look at your own life and you see why so much stuff is dead around you. It's because you good at receiving, but you're not good at giving back. But he says, I need you to practice being a giver. And not just being a getter, because guess what? You can kill individualism. Watch what he said. Watch this. Watch the blessing when you give. Watch the blessing. Look at Luke six. Luke chapter six. Uh, at verse number thirty-eight. I'm not gonna get down with this tonight. I may have to do this another time. Bless the name of Jesus. I don't get done. Luke six, Luke six thirty-eight. Watch this. Watch the blessing when you are giver. When you are a giver, there is a blessing. Let me tell you, let me, let me help you understand something tonight. When you give and you, and you really know what being a giver is, I'm not just talking about monetary. I'm talking about just being a giver in general. When you have a heart to be a giver, the heart of seeing others prevail, the heart of seeing others making it. The heart of being addicted to ministry. When you are a giver, you will never, God will never let you lack. Oh, I wish I had some witnesses tonight to, to say, is there any witnesses tonight to say, there was a time I was stinging? I hold tight to stuff, but when I started being a giver, when I started blessing other folk, when I started meeting a need, when I had a need. God began to do some stuff in my life. I just wish I had at least five people tonight, just to be honest and say, man. Before, amen, I got this type of teaching, before I was a stinging rat. But now that I've learned the word of God, know what God's requires of me, I've learned to be a giver. Notice, notice something. Notice, notice, notice. Luke six thirty-eight. Give and it shall be given unto you. Watch this. Good measure. Press down, shaking together, running over, show me. Give unto your bosom. Do you see that? Jesus says, if you give, it shall gonna be given to you. I believe Jesus. He says, press down, shaking together, running over, show me, underline the word me. God says, I will fix it. That I will bless you by any means necessary, even your enemy. I'll bless you and you won't even know why the blessing is coming. You will open up the mailbox and see a check there. It's a company ten years ago forgot to pay you two thousand dollars. And you saying, Lord, I needed the two thousand. Bless the name of G. God says, I'll fix it. All you gotta do is be a giver. And I'll show you that men shall give unto your bosom. Watch what he said. For with the same measure that you meet with, measured, it should be measured to you again. In other words, he says, how you give? I'm gonna give it back to you. Here's, here's, here's another way of saying. Another way of saying it is this, is literally that however you give. God says, I'm gonna give you the same measure in return. Now, I need to say this because it's a good place to put it. That we gotta stop, we gotta learn not to be comfortable givers. But we gotta learn to be sacrificial givers. Your faith is not tested by being a comfortable giver. Your faith in God is tested when you're sacrificial giver. What do you mean preacher? It's when you give and it hurt to give it, but you believe God is gonna do what he said he's gonna do. Y'all follow that? It's, it's, it's when God says, I want you to bring the tithes and offerings to my storehouse, for there's meat in my house. And God says, that I bless you with a thousand dollars this week. God says, I wanna test your faith by your giving. It's not about the money, it's about your heart. Brother Newsom reminds us that every lowest day. It's about your heart. So he says, I wanna know how much you gonna give. To give comfortably, to give comfortably, maybe sixty dollars. Mm-hmm. Let me pause that. You may say, because if you can give and not miss it, you giving comfortably. It's when you give it and you say, oh my Lord. If I, if I, if I give this, it's gonna hurt a little bit. But I just trust the Lord to know that he'll provide all my need. What I, what I'm here to tell us tonight is. You gotta stop being a comfortable giver. It's comfortable you to pay that hundred dollars. It's uncomfortable to you to pay that, to pay that, to pay that two hundred dollars. Because here's the thing about it, only you know what's comfortable and what's sacrificial. Ain't that good news? Ain't it? It's when you, when you, when you're giving and back to God. And it's comfortable you to do it, you ain't giving right. Or we, it is when it becomes a sacrifice, when you say, God, I got enough faith to know. That if you say that you gonna do it, you gonna do it. Because he said, the same measure that you met gonna be measured back to you. Watch what it says in the message. Same translation, I'm gonna change. Same verse, Luke six thirty-eight. Watch what it says. Give away your life, you'll find life given back. But not merely given back, given back with bonus and blessing. Giving, not getting is the way. Generosity begets generosity. Y'all see that? In other words, God says to us that he wants us as the people of God. To be givers and not getters. Can I, can I give out one more thing and I'm done? I'm done. I promise. And, uh, we'll, I, I, I'll put the last point somewhere in a series somewhere. Watch this. Let, let me kinda mess with your theology a little tonight, and I promise you I'll be done. And y'all can ask me some questions behind. Let me mess your theology up just a little bit. Proverbs chapter eighteen. And verse number sixteen. I want you to go in there real quickly. We'll read from the King James verse. Proverbs chapter eighteen, verse sixteen. Want you, want you to read some. Watch, 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 watch what the Bible says. The Bible says, a man's gift. Make room for him. And bring him before great men. Y'all read that before? Y'all read that before? A man's gift, make it room for him. And bring it him before great men. Let me say it one more time. A man's gift. Make it room for him and bring it him before great men. Now, from the surface of the text, when you just read it per se. It looked obvious. I've heard this preached. I have preached it. I've heard this preached and to me. That God wants to use your gift. And, and, and the gift that you have, whether it's preaching, whether it's singing, whether it's hospitality. That if, 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 if your gift will make room for you. And it'll bring you before great men. And people get excited, people scream, people shout. But what if I told you, he ain't talking about that type of gift? What if I told you tonight that a man's gift will make room for him, ain't got nothing to do with your ability? And your giftedness for the body. That I want you to know tonight, Proverbs eighteen sixteen has been a scripture that has been misquoted, misinterpreted. And when people wanna encourage somebody, the first thing they'll tell them, they'll say, your gift will make room for. I want you to know tonight, that the gift that the proverb writer is talking about. He's not talking about, uh, uh, ability. He's talking about a present or money. He, he's talking about the, the, the Hebrew word for gift in this text. It's the word present. Matter of fact, the word room here means enlargement or create opportunity. How do you know it preacher? I know I'm right about it because in the Middle Eastern culture. Not in the West, because we live in the West, but in the Middle Eastern culture. Before a man would meet to do business with anybody. In order for them to even meet the person to do business with, they had to bring a gift. Because the gift signifies something important, or something of importance. When I showed up with a gift, it signifies to the person I'm trying to do business with. That I'm not just a getter, but I'm, but I'm also a giver. In other words, I'm not here in the meeting just to see what I can get out of it. But I wanna bring a gift to you to show you that I'm not just somebody. A man who just wanna receive some goods, but I'm the one who wanna give back in return. So they will bring a gift. So the proverb writer says that in the ancient texts, a man's gift will make room for him. When you bring a gift, it's going to make people say, wait a minute, this a giver. And I'm just wondering to the night, how many of us are truly givers? How many of us who, who wanna be a relationship with people and we want something from the person? But we not willing to give of nothing of ourselves. We wanna give. Yeah, we receive, but we don't wanna give. I want you to notice what it says in Proverbs, uh, eighteen and sixteen in the N I B. Watch what it says. A gift opens the way and ushered the giver into the presence of the great. Ain't talking about your ability, talking about you giving. Watch what the message says. Same verse, eighteen sixteen. A gift gets attention. Ain't talking about your ability. It buys the attention of intimate people. Oh, the new century version of God's word, new century version. Taking a gift to an important part man will help you get you to in to see him. Let me say that one more time. Taking a gift to an important man would, would help get you in to see him. I want you to understand that this gift, the proverb writer is talking about, he's talking about a present. He's talking about the ability you being a giver. You having a mindset, it ain't about me. I'm know, I know who I am. It's not about me. I wanna show myself to be a giver. Let me show you this last, this last verse. First Kings chapter ten. Show you a, 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 a practical application of this. We know Solomon. Being the wi- the wisest man who ever lived. Uh, and I wanted to show you something. First Kings chapter ten. Verse number one and two. I want you to see, uh, what the Bible says. The Bible says, when the queen of Sheba. Heard about the fame of Solomon and his relationship to the Lord. She came to test Solomon with hard questions. Watch this. Arriving at Jerusalem, watch what she brings, with a very great canvas, cambos, carrots, spices. Large quantities of gold, precious stones. She came to Solomon to talk with him about all that she had on her mind. In other words, Queen Sheba has something that she wanted from Solomon. But because she understood the proverb writer, that, that a man's gift make room for him. She says, I'm not gonna go to the king empty handed. I wanna show him and demonstrate to the king that I ain't just trying to receive, but I'm also a giver. And how many of us, when we talk to our king, I'm talking about King Jesus. How many of us, oftentimes, we come to him just wanting to receive? God, give me this. God, give me that. God, give me this. God, give me that. But God can't get your time. He can't get your talent. He can't get your treasure. And you have become a person who just want to receive. But not a giver. So tonight, the question becomes. People hate church because of individualism. Tonight, can you make up in your mind and say? Lord, I need help with me. Because nobody really gonna wanna admit they struggles. They struggles with giving. You struggle giving to people, you struggle giving, uh, to charity, you struggle giving to God. God says, you won't see your light to his fullest. And the blessings that I have for you until you learn how to be a true giver. So, so I'm asking you tonight, tonight, tomorrow, I want you to practice being a giver and not a getter. Practice saying, I'm gonna bless somebody. I'm gonna help somebody. And when God sees that, God who sees that, and he says, God says, you know what? They get it. I see my son in them. They get it. And when you do that, you will never lack. You'll never lack. You, you can sit in your living room. You may not can do all you can do, but you thank God you got all you need. And God, every now and then, God will throw you some stuff. But, but it's a faith thing. You can, yeah, I can't explain it. It's about faith. It's faith saying, God, I know you gonna take care of me. God says, God said, I'm, I'm, I make sure that you'll never go lack. Because you have learned how to be a giver and not just a giver. I, I pray tonight that something will say that will bless your life. We're going to, we're going to end this series on Wednesday. We're gonna end out on Sunday. And we're gonna be able to, uh, be able to bless you, uh, on next week with a new word, fresh word that's gonna help you. Uh, on along this Christian journey. Do anybody have any questions for me tonight? That, uh, that you may wanna add, something I said that you didn't quite understand, something I can explain better. I will try my best to explain, explain it. So any questions that you may have for me, please ask, uh, at this time. Any questions tonight? Uh, Sister Carter, have any questions from you, from, uh, anybody sent you in it?
No sir.
Oh, amen. Amen. I thank God for you being a wonderful audience. Tonight, I wanna encourage you, we're starting a new series. Uh, next Wednesday and bring somebody, we're gonna be in a twelve week series. We're gonna be in a twelve-week series, a twelve-week series called Detox Twelve Steps to Restore Your Hope, twelve steps, twelve, twelve steps. We're gonna go through some steps. And what we're gonna do, uh, what we're gonna do, we're going to make sure uh, that we will, I wanna take my time with the series. I wanna be able uh, that you get it. We're gonna go through twelve steps, how we can restore our hope. And we got a detox. You know, I know what a detox is, we wanna detox from some stuff. And I wanna give us a mindset of detox. And so this is gonna get us through probably the middle of December uh, to prepare us for the new year in this twelve-week series. But I pray that you'll be ready on next Wednesday as we launch the series uh, uh, Detox Twelve Steps to Restore Uh, Your Hope. Uh, amen. Um, and also somebody asked a question. Uh, yeah, this, this, uh, the, our great media team, they're going to provide. It will be on YouTube, I suppose, probably about tomorrow. Uh, we're recording now, so uh, Brother Jefferson or Brother Cooper, someone will make this available uh, on YouTube, on our YouTube channel, which is the Northwest Church of Christ. Uh, and I pray that you will, you know, send, send it to someone to listen to. And uh, we pray that something will be blessed you uh, on tonight. Uh, I have a few announcements to make. Uh, I wanna make uh, Boma is tomorrow at six P M. Um, uh, if I believe at six P M at the church building, I wanna encourage you to those who uh, think they have some regulations, some rules around that. Uh, Sister Brittany Pettis is our facilitator in that regard. So hopefully uh, you have done uh, the necessary steps to communicate with Sister Pettis in that regard. Uh, also tomorrow is um, tomorrow, tomorrow's also is uh, uh, Thursday, Thursday. Uh, me and my lovely wife is facilitating the discussion with the young adults on Thursday, Thursday. Uh, and we're looking forward, we had a great discussion on uh, last week. Uh, and we're talking about, did the devil really make you do it? And so we still, we still, we on that, we're gonna talk about that. I'm encouraging uh, young adults from ages to eighteen to thirty-five. We had, we had some people a little over eighty, thirty-five last week, that's okay. Uh, but I really want our younger adults to be on uh, so we can engage. And young adults, let's kinda just talk. And our older adults, they need to hear what young adults go through, what they experience, what they struggle with. They need to hear it to know better ways of how they can minister to this particular age group. So from ages eighteen to thirty-five, I wanna encourage you to get on, it's me and Dr. Beard as we facilitate uh, that discussion. Uh, also on September, I'm sorry, Thursday, I see that Thursday, yeah, every Thursday at six P M. A Word for We're, we'll be on ninety-five point seven. I wanna encourage us to, 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 you know, y'all listen to me every week, but you have some, some people that you wanna uh, wanna encourage them uh, to listen in on. It's a, it's a quick fifteen-minute words, it's everybody's blessing. Uh, the, uh, many people, uh, ninety-five point seven, Hallelujah FM is a big radio station here in the mid-south area. Uh, a lot of other preachers of, of different fellowships are on. We are the first church of Christ on this particular station. Uh, and they look forward to us being on here. So I'm gonna encourage you to ask your friends, family, coworkers to listen in on that every Thursday at six P M. Uh, at uh, ninety-five uh, point uh, seven. Also, I, did I say Thursday, Thursday is seven-thirty? It's not seven o'clock, seven-thirty. So just make sure that for Thursday, you're gonna seven-thirty. Also, for our, we're doing a ho- our holiday giveaway. Remember, we share Jesus and resources. Uh, Sister Oliver put something out, asking uh, members to give a hundred dollars towards our um, a hundred dollars towards our um, uh, giveaway. Last year, we was able to bless fifty or so families for Christmas and Thanksgiving and Christmas. Uh, we wanna do more this year. And so we're asking the congregation members, families to give a hundred dollars uh, to this cause. Thank, thank God for those who've already started giving uh, 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 to this particular cause. We're doing it early, so we wanna go ahead and get that done. So we're encouraging you to be a giver tonight, to be not just a getter and be able to bless somebody. Uh, November the first is the deadline to that, but we were, we're, we're open. If you, if you need more time for whatever reason, please reach out to say something. Uh, but then we're trying to get this thing done to be proactive in our giving uh, and receiving. So we were asking you a hundred dollars from everyone. And then I think it's on all, you can give it either way, our cash app, our PayPal, our Venmo, you can give towards those way. But just note uh, that you're giving for the, for the holiday season and what we're trying to do in that regard. Uh, November the thirteenth, November the thirteenth is our cleanup day. Uh, nine A M to two P M at the church building, we asking volunteers to sign up. Uh, the Northwest Cares Committee, Northwest Cares is our um, is our um, our preparation for our daycare. I wanna see somebody saying, hallelujah, thank you, Jesus. We are preparing, we are being proactive. Our, the, the vision of the Northwest Church is gonna come to reality. So we're asking you uh, if you're interested in being a volunteer, helping us prepare for this by cleaning up, please contact Sister Erby. Uh, you see her phone number right there, nine zero one two eight two twenty-five fifty-one. Uh, please contact her or just show up. However, I would love for you just, I, I, my preference is for you to contact her and to commit to say that you're going to be there. Amen. And uh, so we're thankful and grateful uh, for that. So be praying for that, because this is something where we are trying to do. Uh, we are trying to make sure that um, that we, as we, as we prepare. Uh, this is just the first day, we're trying to lunch the daycare first and after we will lunch the school. Because we are going to be a blessing to our church as well as our community. And so I thank God for the committee who is preparing that and uh, spending some time on that. Um, uh, yeah, I saw somebody ask about Thursday, Thursday, Thursday is seven-thirty P M. Seven-thirty P M tomorrow. Uh, it will be our time, uh, central standard time, seven-thirty P M. Uh, September the seventeenth, this Friday uh, is uh, we will have Faith Table Talk uh, Suicide Prevention and Awareness. If y'all don't know that we are living in times right now where uh, suicide is real, is, it does, it does not, it's not gender specific, it's not just for certain, for certain genders or certain races, it can hit anybody. And so uh, we will have Kelly Harris, who will be with us, who's a licensed professional counselor. I had the privilege of Sister, Sister Rob, you don't know this, but I worked with Kelly Harris for years. Great, great therapist, great uh, clinician. And I'm looking forward to Kelly being with us on uh, this Friday uh, as she, as she bless us. Also, uh, our ladies day, uh, ladies day, James Ministry is presenting God's masterpiece uh, for my mess, to my message. This was done, we were supposed to do this in twenty-twenty, weren't able to do it. However, the pet rally will be Friday, October the eighth, twenty-twenty-one, Sister Cora Hamilton, the keynote speaker uh, from the Mountain View Church of Christ. And also it will be viewed on Zoom as well. So we wanna encourage our ladies uh, to zoom in and uh, to participate with this uh, uh, this great, great, great uh, third serve that we're trying to do. Uh, see Sister Beer, Dr. Beer with more details about it. Uh, she can give more better details than I can about it. I thank God that she's leading it and trying and leading with the committee that she has as we try to do great things uh, with our women here uh, at the Northwest Church of Christ. Uh, also, this is this Sunday, Brother Newsom? This Sunday is our Fresh Start uh, two oh one. Uh, so if you are, if you was in Fresh Start, if you're a new member and you was in Fresh Start one oh one, and you have committed uh, to being a level uh, four or five, we're asking you to be in Fresh Start two oh one. Um, we're asking you to be on the Fresh Start this coming uh, this coming uh, Sunday at five P M. And so we're asking you to, to do that. And so our theme will be for that particular zone is self-growth. And so if you're interested and if you have already been to levels, do not come to two oh one if you have not been to one oh one. So if you already went to one oh one and you was in the last one and you committed to, to levels four or five, please, please, please. Uh, we would love to see you in two oh one. I think that's all the announcements I have. Am I, am I missing anything, Brother Newsom? Any ministry leaders? Am I missing anything? Please let me know.
No doubt.
Okay. Uh, uh, ministry leaders, I do a ministry on September the twenty-sixth at one P M. Uh, it's something that our ministry leaders, uh, group me. I'm asking all ministry leaders for a meeting at one P M right after our worship. So if you are a ministry leader, uh, and if you, and they group me, uh, most definitely, uh, please, please uh, be in that meeting uh, September the twenty-sixth at one P P M. That's all I have tonight, that's all I have. Any prayer requests, any prayer requests tonight as we close? Any prayer requests? Any prayer requests?